Thank you so much for joining with us today, tonight. And I know that we had a good class last week and I hope that tonight's going to be just as well. Last week, we spoke about the, you know, how it came that I wrote the Beatitudes. And that was due to some real struggles that I had at the church and different problems that occurred there. And I was reflecting on how difficult that was for me. And, um, and so I wrote the Beatitudes because I wanted to get back to the essence of what I thought true religion was. So I wrote the Beatitudes, which is the Green Book. And that became the one that was published back in 2015. But I could not have done it myself because it was a book that I'd never written a book before. Um, you know, I'd like to write, but I'd never written a book before. I wrote sermons and never had anything published or anything of that nature. But, but you know, um, it was just almost God's providence that all of a sudden there was a person who lived uh, on the fifth floor of the condominium building that we lived in. And her husband and their name was Dunphy, Jim and Rose. And she is a professional writer. She's published several books and I don't know many. She's written magazine articles, she's edited books. And she, and I asked her if she would edit my book and help me through the process on how to do that. And she said that she'd be delighted to do that. So, um, so she went, we went through a process of several weeks, maybe a month or two, I think. And, uh, and she was able to come out with a manuscript to show me all the mistakes I made. And all the words I shouldn't use and all the words I should use and how to rearrange everything. And she was very detailed. I mean, you know, every word she read in this book because she's the one that edited it. And she's on the back of the book also, um, you know, at the bottom of this book. She's written a book called, uh, Orange Peels and Cobblestones. And it's a very, very fascinating, interesting book. It's about her life and, and when she came over to America from Italy. She was born in Italy and she came over here. And that's what I was going to get her to talk about.
Why don't you talk? See if you're on.
Yes, Rob, I don't know if you can hear me. Can you hear me?
Okay, uh, como esta?
Estoy bien, gracias. Can you hear me?
Buenjourno?
Yes, hi. I'm on, but I don't know if you can hear me.
She must be coming in and out.
They can't hear me.
We can hear you, Rose. I don't know. Can you hear me?
I can hear you fine. Um, I don't know if you can see me, but if you can't, then at least we'll go with hearing.
Okay, that's good. And did you hear me talk about how you edited the book?
Yes, I did. Thank you. It was a pleasure to edit your book. Uh, wonderful insights on the book. Uh, I told you, it was like a prayer whenever I edited your book. And you did a fine job with it. And I'm hoping that everyone who reads it will get as much out of it even more than I even did. And I loved it very much.
Thank you. Um, and by the way, Rose is the one who I took Italian classes from. And she had an Italian class there on the, uh, on the grounds at the condominium complex. And there were about 10 of us there. And, uh, I don't remember hardly a thing in Italian anymore.
Well, you have to practice. You have to practice if you want to remember.
So Rose, tell, tell us a little bit about your, um, about your book. Because I think it's fascinating, the writing process and a little bit about your story about how you came to America.
Okay, well, I'll start with the book because that might answer both questions. Um, it's too bad I can't show just a copy of the book, but there's no image here of me here. Uh, but, um, Orange Peels and Cobblestones is both a love story and a coming of age novel that takes place in Italy, in New York and in California. And it's based on a true event, something that happened to me. Uh, but it is a novel. I wrote it as a novel. Um, the event that I am, uh, that motivated me to write the book is that when I was 10 years old and living in Italy, my mother put me on a plane alone to travel more than 3,000 miles to come from Italy to New York and be adopted by an aunt and uncle I had never met. So as you can imagine, the experience was very traumatic for me as a 10 year old. And I felt totally abandoned, rejected, betrayed really by the one person I thought I could trust, my own mother. And as I grew up, questions haunted me. How does a mother give away her own child? How could my mother give me away? And why did she do it when I was 10? Why not when I was a baby? When perhaps I went to felt the pain of separation so keenly? So, um, then as an adult, as these questions kept taunting me, I knew I had to do something to heal from it. And besides prayer, I felt I could, I could write about it. Am I breaking up? I can't tell. I hear.
No, we can, you're okay.
I'm coming across well. Okay. Um, and, um, so I sat down to write the book. And it was a very painful experience in writing the book. I cried a lot during the process. It took several years because along with the story came those feelings of abandonment and rejection and betrayal. And I didn't want to go through them again. But I realized that in order to write the book, I had to go through them again. And I did. And the end result is the book, Orange Peels and Cobblestones.
Um, and not only is it in English, but you've also written in an Italian version, is that right?
Yes, I had to translate it into Italian because I have a lot of relatives in Italy that when the book came out, I sent them a copy and they said, wow, that's wonderful. But you know, we can't read it. We don't know English, they said. So, um, so I had to write it in Italian. And then when the Italian version came out and I gave them a copy of that, um, they would take the copy and go and hide in different places because they wanted to read it. And, uh, it was very interesting for them to read the way I wrote the story and the way they remembered. A lot of my cousins were aware of what happened, probably even more than I did. Because you know, when you're the person involved, you're, you're too subjective about it. Um, and then they told me how they saw it and they read how I wrote it. And it was just interesting to share with one another. Um, and in the book, as I say, I tell the story of the 10 year old Marietta. I called the young girl. And she grows up, she meets the love of her life. Um, they marry, they have children, but she has to deal with why she was given away by her mother. And, uh, and the story evolves where she ends up asking her mother these questions, which are very painful questions to ask and to be asked. So, um, I won't tell you anymore in case you do read the book so that you can enjoy the story.
Okay, thank you, Rose. That's good. I think everybody has gotten the gist of that and appreciates it a lot. And I know you've written a lot of other things, some of them which are pretty humorous actually. I won't mention some of them right now, but, um, uh, and magazine articles and things like that. She, she was a school teacher. Her husband was a school teacher and they're retired. They have a home in Long Island, I think two homes maybe. And they have a condominium in, in Delray Beach, Florida. And that's how we got to know them. And, um, they're a great couple. And, uh, and the reason that I also wanted her, not only to show that, um, how the process helped me and how they really intervened in my life to help me. Because Jim did a lot of the computer work. He did a lot of the helping me to figure out how to, how to print it and publish it. Um, but, uh, you know, also to let you know that if you ever have a desire to write or any of you are on Zoom or in the room, if you've even have collections of things that you've written, if you need any help on doing that, it's really, really not that difficult. Cause this is about my 10th book now. So, uh, I'm well along in the process and I'm pretty good at it. So that I can help anybody to, if they ever have a desire to write anything, fiction, nonfiction, or anything else Christian. So, Rose, thank you very much for joining with us today. And, and I, I'll let you go if you'd like, if you'd like. So, thank you so much for being a part of us today.
Thank you so much for inviting me and, um, good luck with your discussion.
Thank you, Rose. And if anybody needs a copy of your book, uh, just, I, I can make sure that they can find it and get it. And just like they did all our other books. So just let me know. Thanks, Rose.
Thank you. They're all on Amazon, both your books, Rob and mine, probably, right?
That's right.
All right. A pleasure to have seen you all. I'm sorry that we couldn't see each other face to face, but go ahead and enjoy your discussion. Bye, Rob.
Um, we're going to our lesson now. And, uh, by the way, we're going to have another guest speaker next week. And, uh, and he's somebody that is real special to me. And, uh, I think he'll be very helpful for talk, speaking to what we're going to talk about next week. And I'll give you a little information about that. Um, let me start off by saying that there, this is so appropriate, isn't it? Because Pastor Jared last night at the Ask Wednesday service was talking about, uh, the, the way that we mourn over our sin. And, uh, that's exactly what this is about tonight. It's about, about our mourning. We have two parts to it. One is the mourning part and the second is the comfort part. And it follows from the first lesson because the first lesson was about abandoning ourselves, surrendering ourselves, finding ourselves fully dependent on God. Because you know, at the beginning of our life and at the end of our life, that's what we should learn from life itself is that even though we're busy filling in the dash, we actually have a dependency that is needed there. And that is called faith. Today we talk about sin and the consequences of sin and then the, the, the solution for sin. And that means that we are moving into what would be called maybe repentance. That is the understanding that we are sinners. Um, you know, I think before I became a Christian, I don't know if I really understood what sin was. I mean, you know, my mom and dad would tell me, you know, don't do that or do this or don't do that. But I didn't really know what sin was. Um, what would you say that sin is? Are they unmuted, Mark? Okay, we're going to unmute the Zoom people.
Again, if you want to temporarily unmute yourself, just press a space bar. If you want something to say.
What is, what do you think is sin? Can you come up with some ideas or definitions of what you think that is? So they're pressing their buttons, I guess. David, did you have something to say?
I would say it's anything that separates you from God.
Okay, so it's a separation of God. Anything you do, you know, anything you say, anything you think. Um, the, the longer I become a Christian, the more I realize how sin plays such an important part in my own life. Um, in the sense that I realize, well, there was a man who told me once that it's like peeling back an onion. Um, when you first become a Christian, it's almost like, well, you know, maybe I ought to give up this or give up that. You know, I know it's bad because the Bible says it's bad. And it's something usually you do or you don't do. But the longer you become a Christian, I think, the more you start realizing things you say or things you don't say. And then if longer you become a Christian, you realize it's more than not just doing and saying, it's also thinking. And that's where we really get down to the basis, you know, in the inner part of the onion. Because, you know, we start to realize that we're, we're thinking bad things or, uh, you know, thinking bad thoughts. You know, Jesus was really in the Sermon on the Mount was really strong on telling us that, you know, that it's not just what you do, it's what you think. For example, he said that it's, it's, it's wrong to murder somebody. But he said, if you're angry in your heart with your brother without cause, that's sin too. Or he said for us men particularly, it's wrong to commit adultery. But it's also, he said, wrong to a look, to look at a woman with lust. And you're not doing anything. You're not, your hands off, but you're looking and you're thinking. And so the deeper we go, it seems to me, the, the harder it becomes. And the more sin becomes a real important thing in our lives. And, uh, and, and that's what our problem is. The problem is sin. This is, um, uh, one of our favorite movies is, it's not a Christian movie. It's called Walk the Line. And does anybody know who that's about? Has anybody seen it? Johnny Cash, yes. I was asking Joylyn, when I was doing karaoke years ago in Delray Beach. I believe that I sang one of his songs, but we weren't sure exactly what it was. But I think it might've been Ring of Fire. Remember that? Down, down, down. Okay. So, uh, but you know, Johnny Cash was very interesting because he decided early on in his own career that he would wear black whenever he performed. And all the band members performed in black also. And that was a sign of, he said, he said himself that that was a sign of his mourning. He was mourning over, you know, he was very involved in prison ministry and, and prison, helping prisoners because he spent a time in Folsom Prison. But, um, you know, he was very, he mourned over these problems. Now he had a lot of hits and a lot of, lot of interesting music that he did for over so many decades. But what a lot of people don't realize is that, that he was a Christian and that he was also a friend of Billy Graham. Matter of fact, he performed at several of his crusades. And I, I, I find that really revealing because, you know, he even wrote a book. He, he did an audio on the New Testament. You know how those audio versions about reading a New Testament? He read an audio version of the New Testament. Um, I am an upbeat person. I'm, you know, I have rose colored glasses on. I don't like wearing black very much, but I can understand where Johnny was coming from because his life, Rose expressed it, was very hard at the beginning. Um, if you've read, if you've seen the movie, you know that his life began with a lot of guilt, with a lot of problems. And, um, he grew out of that, of course, but, um, he dealt with it, I think, by Jesus Christ. And that's the way that we can be black on one side, but have white on the other, you know? So, um, well, let's look at the, the first, the first page on page 19. Um, in this I say that this is a rather sad thing, isn't it? A hundred percent of us will die. I don't think there's anybody that's not going to die. Last week we said there were two people that didn't die. I doubt that odds are very good. Very well. So, uh, you know, my grandparents have died, my parents have died. It makes me sad, really makes me sad. And that's the reason I wrote the other book that I have, If I Should Die Before I Wake. Because I wanted all of us to have a certainty that even though we die, yet shall we live. And I really find that super important for us. So a hundred percent of us die and that is really a sad thing for us. Down on the third paragraph, I talk about the paradox. And I say, as we move to the second Beatitude, we are confronted with a paradox, a mystery, a seeming contradiction. The problem is that Jesus asserts that what seemed to be sort of a morbid view of living, a negative worldview that elevates pessimism. To be happy while one is mourning at as a funeral, as at a funeral is a seeming contradiction in terms. Because really, when we're unhappy, when we're sad, when we feel down, we don't feel very happy. When tragic events come in our lives or tragic events in the world come about us, it's hard to be happy in those things itself. How, how do you think we could, how do you think we could be happy in bad circumstances? For example, uh, take Rose, for example. How could she be happy in the time when she felt abandoned, as she said? Anybody have any thoughts? What about, um, seeing a long-term view of the situation? Do you think that would help? In other words, well, let me give another example, another idea. Um, you know, I'm freezing cold right now. I used to live in 80 degree weather constantly almost. And Joylyn and I moved to Mississippi and, you know, we, we really like it here, but we do not like the cold weather. And to be honest with you, I am freezing this week. This week has been the most horrible week of, of my life. And I said to Joylyn, I said, you know, this is really, really bad. It makes me very, very sad. Especially since I have orchids that have to be protected and all sorts of things. But, um, there, there is a blessing in it in the sense that I could be in San Antonio. Or I could be in Memphis or I could even be in Jackson where their pipes are freezing and they don't have water. And people are, you know, even though we go through tragic things, sometimes when we compare it to people who do not have anything, um, it's really can be kind of thinking about a blessing in it. Um, you know, when I got a, Rose told me the, I've read the book and the story of where she grew up. And I've seen a picture of the house. They had no running water in their house. They had to actually walk down to a well. And this is, we're talking about the 20th century. They had to walk down to a well to get the water for their house. They had, they had no toilets in their house. They had no furnace in their house. They had no, um, they had no stove in their house. I mean, they cooked over a fire. And they were not poor people in Italy either. They were about middle class probably. And so they probably, when she moved to America and saw all the good things that happened in the 1960s and 70s in New York, they had all the things that she didn't have in Italy. So she felt a little bit grateful for that too. So sometimes I think we can see a blessing in it. I think sometimes we can see a blessing in the long-term view also, is that this too shall pass. So when we go through difficulties or problems or physical ailments or anything like that, even COVID, uh, sometimes we know that that too shall pass. It's a paradox though, isn't it? Really is. Um, now the sin problem is on page 21. And here we talk about mourning in the Bible. And the first, the Greek word for mourning is penteo, which is a kind of grief or a sorrow that is associated with death. And it is found 10 times in the New Testament. When Jesus is uses it here, it's a present participle. And I, I don't know if you know what that means, but it means that you are continually doing it. Um, you know, I'm continually talking right now, so I'm, I'm talking. That's a present participle. If I did it before, I say I talked. If I do in the future, I will talk. But this means talking right now. So Jesus is saying, you're constantly mourning. Now, why would, and that's really strange, isn't it? To think that we, yeah, I had a problem yesterday and I have a problem probably tomorrow. But he's talking about continually, continually, uh, um, mourning. That's really odd. And then on the top of page 22, we talk about the three different kinds, the three types of mourning. One is called natural mourning or the grief that we have over deaths when we go to a funeral or a loved one dies. And I'm sure that everybody in this room has had at least one death that probably affected us more or in, than others. Perhaps it was a, um, a parent or a grandparent or a spouse or a child. You know, I've known several people that have had their child die in very young age, when they were perhaps even babies, very, very stressful. And there's a grief in that, a mourning. And that's over real death, natural death. You know, God didn't intend for us to die when he created us. When he made Adam and Eve into Garden of Eden, he intended for us to live forever. And what happened? Sin, that's right. Sin created a real problem for us. A second type is sinful mourning. And that's where we have guilt over our sin, that we feel guilty about it. Um, we feel guilty what things we've done, things we haven't done and things we said and things we thought. Gracious mourning is the sorrow of the plight of the world. And, um, this is where we see the tragedies in the world, right? When we see people that we don't know die from COVID, we aren't mourning their death because we really don't know them personally. It doesn't really affect us. Or when we see, as we'll talk about later in the seventh Beatitude, the hostility and division within our society and in our world today. When we see terrorism, um, in, in countries where we've never been to that country perhaps before. Uh, when we see people in auto accidents and they get killed as a young person. We've seen that, you know, recently in Pikiun even. Uh, we don't really maybe know that person, but it grieves us, you know? That's, that's a, that's what we would call a gracious mourning. We, we almost feel bad for the people that are suffering, you know, the people that are hurting. So these three types, three types of mourning. And, um, you know, you, we can think of all different situations for that. But as we'll find out, the real one that he's talking about is primarily the sinful morning. Now it's in the middle of the page, I said that Jesus mourned twice. And once what he, he was mourning in Luke 19 over, over Jerusalem. Because what do you think he saw about Jerusalem? Why do you think he cried with mourning about that? They were alienated from him, that's for sure. Someone else? They were going to crucify him, which I'm, I'm sure that that was not a very good thought for him. And then what would happen in 70 AD? Does anybody know what would happen then? About 70, about 40 years later? Yes, that's when Jerusalem was destroyed. And, um, and, and that, and they tore down the temple. And since, since 70 AD until this present time, they don't have a temple there anymore, which was the center of their worship. That's where God was. So he saw that God was going to be removed from their presence. They, he was going to be taken out. And that made him very sorry, very, very mournful. The second time he mourned was over Lazarus. And, uh, you know, this was in John chapter 11. And he wept, you remember? And he was very, he was very mournful over that. I believe that he would mourn for several reasons. I think it was due number one, because he felt sorry for Mary and Martha. I think that he felt sorry for the people that were wailing and mourning at the, at the grave. It was kind of a gracious mourning. But I think even more, it was a mourning because he realized how death has ruled and how it has become dominant in humankind. And that he, and he knew that that was not what God intended for us. There are two gardens in the Bible. First garden, where do you think the first garden was? Eden, that's right. And that's where man sinned and that's where he died. The second garden was Gethsemane, where he pretty much decided he was going to die. Not my will, he said, but your will be done. And great sweat came off of his body like blood and it was dripping. Remove this cup from me, but not nevertheless not what I will, but what that wilt. And that's where he was going to bring the solution for sin. And so he was really realizing that that was the only way that we could get out of death. That was the only way that, that all of us could get out of death. And that's the way he did it. At the bottom of page 22, I'll read this. It says, "It was not long after these three times, these times of grief, that people who followed Jesus would also mourn." Why? Because he would die. And why would Jesus die? Because of sin. This is what wrecked the world. And what Jesus did by his death was put sin in its place. Sin had led to the ruin of a city and to the death of Lazarus. Sin ruins everything. It takes that which is pure and good and innocent and virtuous and wrecks it. It destroys lives and people and cities and nations and even destroyed Jesus. Jesus never mourned over sin because he really had no sin to mourn over. But he did know the sin in us and how grievous that is. And so indeed, that's why he went to the cross. And then I say, but, and here is the good part. His death on the cross fulfilled the sorrow over sin because he took upon himself the sin of the whole world. The burden of sin and sorrow was found in the forgiveness of the cross. And so that's what the cross solution is. The problem was sin in the Garden of Eden. And now the solution is in the Garden of Gethsemane, which is his own death to pay the penalty for our sin. Um, there are three kinds of sin in the next paragraph. Um, we mourn over the sin of the world. We mourn over the sin we see in others. And we mourn over our own sin. But forgiveness comes by the one who died for our sin. He set things back right. He set it in place. Um, I, 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 I'm back, um, in my book, uh, on page 23. I think I said this a little more clearly, I think. It was, it was not just about death, it was about sin. Sin has ruined everything. And Jesus came to remedy that. He came to deal with sin and he did. This is why Jesus was called a man of sorrows. He mourned over the sin of man. He mourned over death, which he caused, which sin caused. And we also mourn, not only over the sin of man, but also the son of man who paid for our sin so that we might be saved. We mourn over the sin of the world. We mourn over the sin of others. We mourn over our own sin. Now we know what Jesus was talking about. He mourned because he saw what sin had done to the world and the whole human race. What has sin, what sin has done to you and what sin has done to me. Sin came along and ruined it all. Sin is what causes death. Sin is why people die. So real problem, but thank God he sent Jesus Christ. The wages of sin is death, but the gift of God is eternal life in Jesus Christ. So any other thoughts or comments or questions, anything, before we move on to the real solution to the problem? Kind of sad, isn't it? I mean, when you think about the whole terminology, we as Christians see this as, um, we understand what it is. We know that that is the problem. But you know, people who are not Christians don't really understand that, do they? They think that we have a problem, but they aren't sure exactly what the problem is. And, uh, and matter of fact, And, and matter of fact, on page, I believe it's on page twenty-four in the book, it's a, it's a quote from Max Lucado. And it begins the comforted part, it says, if, and this is what Max said, he said, "If our greatest need had been information, God would have sent us an educator." Well, teachers don't resolve the issues of the heart. They can resolve the issues of the mind, but not the issues of the heart. "If our greatest need had been technology, God would have sent a scientist." And I'm glad that we have Zoom, and I'm glad we have Bluetooth, and you know, all these other things. And I appreciate all the, all the technology we have. It's been very helpful, but it still doesn't, it still doesn't solve evil in the world. There's still people with technology that do evil. Sometimes they do more. "If our greatest need had been money, God would have sent us an economist," but he did not do that, did he? No. Matter of fact, the story is told, okay, this is one humor for tonight, okay? The story is told that an angel came to this man and said, "I have a gift that I want to give you. You have a choice, though. You have, you have three options." And the man says, "Well, what are those options?" He said, "The first thing is that I will, I will make you the most handsome man in the world, and all the women will love you and fall over heels, head over heels for you." Pretty good. What's the second option? The angel said, "Well, I have, the second option is that I will give you all a million dollars, and you will be one of the wealthiest men in the world, and your influence in the financial world, world as an economist, will be renowned." That sounds pretty good, too. What's the third option? "Third option is," the angel said, "that I will make you the wisest man in the world, and you will know everything." I mean, you will be so smart that people will come to you like they did to Solomon, find out answers to their questions. He said, "That's pretty good." He said, "Matter of fact, I'm going to take that one." So he took the one of wisdom, and he walked out of the room, and he felt like the smartest man in the world, but then he thought. And his friends came up to him and said, "We heard what had happened. You're the smartest man in the world. Say something profound." And he said, "I should have taken the money." So not an economist or an educator. "If our greatest need had been pleasure, God would have sent us an entertainer," says Max Lucado, "and tell jokes. But our greatest need was forgiveness, so God sent a Savior." I love that. Isn't that wonderful? I mean, it's so true. Our greatest need, you see, is, we know as Christians, that our greatest need is not whether we have enough money, or whether we have enough intelligence, or anything else, whether we have a good personality, or how handsome we are, anything else, or beautiful. It comes down to sin. That's our real problem, and, and the answer to that, that problem was, the solution was the Christ, and that he would die on the cross. Let's look on the page of top twenty-four. And this is where I say, that is something which we, which I see in what Jesus says here in the Second Beatitude. It tells us that there is a comfort in our mourning over sin. We know what that is. It is spelled F-O-R-G-I-V-E, and we are forgiven, the comfort of forgiveness. Next week, our guest speaker might talk a little bit about that, because it's through his influence that I understand, I understood even more the depth of that understanding of forgiveness, especially as it relates to the Lord's Supper, when we take communion. The Greek word for comfort is parakaleo, which means basically to come alongside of someone. Now, I don't know if we have any nurses in the room. We do. Okay, Charlie. But a nurse usually is someone who comes alongside of someone else and helps them along in their illness or sickness. Some of the people today have had COVID, and, and there's people that have to stand by their side. And you perhaps have gone through that yourself, where you've had to come alongside someone. A comforter is a person who comes alongside of another person and helps them. And we have three ways that that happens. First of all, we have God our Father, who treats us as a child. You know, there's a great comfort in that. And in my book, I talk about the fact that we also have, you know, God is also considered a mother. As a mother comforts her children, so I will comfort you, says the Lord. And so it really is not, you know, we're not being gender-wise here. We're just thinking of the fact that he is our heavenly parent, and that he, he takes care of us. Some people have trouble associating God with our Father, because maybe they had a father that was cruel. I'm sure that Rose maybe had a little problem with that, because she saw her parents who gave her away, said goodbye, that's it, and sent her to a place she'd never been before. I'm sure that she has problems with that. Some children have been abused by their parents, either by a mother or father, and they probably have a difficult time understanding a father that loves them. I grew up with parents that were very, very good, and I have a great love for my father and my mother. You know, they were, dad was law and mom was grace, so I could get both. And so, you know, my dad could do anything. When I was a child, I thought my dad was perfect. I, 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 I didn't realize until I was sixteen that he was, he ever did anything wrong. And then at about eighteen, I realized he never did anything right. So but when I was a little boy, I thought, I thought dad was perfect. I mean, he was strong. He could lift, he could beat up anybody, any, any other dad. And we used to brag about that as kids. "My dad can beat up your dad." "Oh, no, he can't." Well, you know, I didn't, that's the infantile mind we had as children. And my mother was always just totally comforting, you know. I think I tell the story in my book about how, you know, she would, when I had these nightmares, and I would go down to the living room, and I'd lay on the couch there, and mom would, you know, pat me and make me feel better, and then I'd fall asleep, and she'd walk me back to the room, you know? And that was just an example of the way she was. She was a great comforter. So my parents were very, very, to me, they were just really wonderful, and I grew up in a very happy family. So I can associate God as my father and mother, knowing that they do watch after me, they take care of me, except this, this father is perfect. The second one, of course, is Christ, who is obviously the comfort we receive is from his forgiveness, and because he died on the cross for our sins, and as he gave his life for us. And that means that he will never hold us, he will never hold us guilty for any sin that we've ever committed in the past, nor any sin that we will commit in the future, any thought we've had that is, is bad. I think we spoke in Sunday School about when we get to heaven, that we're going to be rewarded according to certain levels. Angel, I think you spoke about that too, Sunday. And I, I think there will be some degrees of rewards in heaven for some of us. I don't know what step we'll be on. I don't know where we'll be, and it, I think you said that it doesn't really matter, because we'll all be happy anyway, so it doesn't really matter. But I do not, I do not believe in, all my studies of the scripture, that I can find one place that says that when you get to heaven, that God is going to say, "You did that wrong," or "Why were you thinking that?" Or, you know, he's not going to beat us up at all. I don't think he's, your sins will be remembered no more. He won't remember your sins. Now, you know, he'll have it in his, you know, his tape recorder back there, but in his big book, but he will never bring it up to you. He'll never, you know, put you down for it. He'll never push you, because see, Jesus took the hundred percent of our sin. He didn't take just ninety percent. He didn't take all the big stuff and the little stuff. He didn't take part of it and say, "Well, when you get to heaven, then God's going to accuse you of the ten percent." I don't think that's true at all. I don't, I don't see how in the Bible we can rectify that. I strongly believe that every sin that you have ever committed, anything you have ever done yesterday, in the past, today, tomorrow, anything you have ever done, if you're in Christ and you've asked for forgiveness, it's gone. As deep, as far as the east is from the west, he removes our transgressions from us. And you don't need to beat yourself up. You don't need to feel bad about something you've done or said or thought, because it's forgiven. That's the blessing of being in Christ. And the third one is, of course, there is a balm in Gilead. Remember that song? Too bad Linda's not here. She could sing it for us. "There is a balm in Gilead to heal the sin-sick soul." Is that, Patty could probably sing it really well, but she has her mask on, so. There, there's a comfort we receive from the Holy Spirit. The Holy Spirit is called the pericleth in the Bible, which is a derivative of parakaleo. The verb is parakaleo, the noun is pericleth, and this is sometimes translated as counselor, comforter, encourager. And it means that the Holy Spirit is with us all the time. He's always with us. He is present there, and he's always encouraging and comforting us. Whenever we feel that sense in our own lives, that, that we are not only forgiven, but that we know of his presence in our lives, whether we're praying, or singing, or worshiping, or fellowshiping, or serving, or doing anything else, we know that he is with us. You know, that's what the Holy Spirit does, and he assures us that that sin has been taken care of, that Christ did that, and that you don't need to think about that anymore. Put it under the table. And then on the, close to the bottom of page twenty-five, the paragraph says, "The Second Beatitude," and I'm trying to relate the First Beatitude to the Second. "The Second Beatitude flows naturally from the First Beatitude. While the first, of what is of first importance is that we develop this righteous relationship with God by surrender and becoming utterly broken and dependent upon God, this can only happen in the context of the confession of our sin and the forgiveness that has come at the death of Jesus Christ." Forgiveness is the key to the Christian faith. Unless we can truly, truly recognize our sin and the death that has become the punishment for our sin, then we confess them not only once, but daily to God, and we can be healed or comforted. So the solution to our problem is the death of Christ, who gives us forgiveness. And that is where the Second Beatitude is of utmost importance. I don't think you can become a Christian until you recognize that you're a sinner. You know, Billy Graham in his Crusades, I mean, that was his point. That was the whole deal. He said, you know, "If you recognize your sin and you know you are sinner, come forward, because the gift of God is eternal life, and it's free, and you will receive forgiveness for eternity." And that is the blessing that we have. And that's the reason that sometimes an invitation is very important when we're around people that do not, we suspect do not know Christ. Some of us probably responded one day to Christ. I know I did. And I realized, not to the full extent of it, but I realized that my sins were forgiven. So, so before we close with prayer, I'm going to ask if there's any thoughts, comments, questions, or anything else that anybody has on what we've talked about tonight. I'll wait just a second.
So when you say blessed are
David?
Sin entered in the garden, correct?
Yes.
But we have a, we're born with a sinful nature also, correct?
Yes.
And that, that is something, that's why, that's why it's important to accept what Jesus did for us, so we can be forgiven of that.
Yes.
That sinful nature. And then the Holy Spirit is there for us as we go through every day to come alongside of us to, I don't know, to say, to convict us. Maybe if our, our mind is wandering, or if we're doing something wrong. So maybe that's why, that's why I get out of this. You know, it's, it's very important that we, we realize without God, without Jesus' death, we would be
Exactly.
Or we'd be, we, we could never live up to the standard that God
Absolutely, absolutely. We, nobody can accept Jesus. You know, there was nobody else that could do that. That's exactly right. And that's why the Beatitudes are not just nice sayings. They're not just, you know, when we think just, you know, when we, if, if, before we studied this, we would think, blessed are those who mourn, for they will be comforted. We think, oh, he means he's talking about a funeral. You know, when I go to a funeral, well, I'll feel good about it, you know? But that isn't, that isn't the whole principle of what he's getting across here. It's deeper than that. Because I think what you're saying is the very nature of who we are as human beings. And that sin nature, we then receive the spirit nature, too. So we have that battle going on within us. We have still the sin nature that has not left us, because we still sin. But we also have God's nature, which is the Holy Spirit dwelling in our hearts, and that Holy Spirit is ministering to us every day. Because I know, and David, when you say that, you know, I know when I pray every morning, that's one of the main things that I do, is I ask for forgiveness of my thoughts, words, and deeds for, for the day. And, and it convicts us when we do something wrong. Mark, you had something too?
No, that's actually what I was wondering if, when you say blessed are those who mourn, too, too often, we think in modern terms of, of funerals, of when we're sad, but it's not necessarily comfort because we're sad, it's comfort because we recognize that we are sinners.
Right, right.
We're mourning because we recognize that we are sinners, and therefore he will provide comfort.
In essence, we mourn over our sin.
Yeah.
We're really mourning over our sin. When we, when we mourn a death in a family or some, a loved one, we're really mourning over sin. That's why Jesus mourned, I think, at the, at Lazarus, because he was mourning over death and mourning over the sin which created that death. So, yeah, very good. Anybody on Zoom? And have any questions or comments or any thoughts or anything? Oh, I'm looking around. There are some people I can't see, but I see Sherry. I see, yeah. Charlie, got any questions or thoughts? No? Anybody else in the room have any thoughts or questions? That's very true. You know, she said there's no degree for sin. The murderer is just as bad as the person who is angry without cause, because it's all sin, and there's not that degree of sin. Now, that's why some people have really been bad sinners and have come to know Christ, and their lives have been turned around completely. I think that probably sin is just something that we don't really recognize until God speaks to our hearts. I really don't think, I think we think, oh, I do bad things, or I've done wrong things, or, you know, I've heard people say, well, "I think that God is going to let me into heaven." They're not Christians, too. But I think God's going to let me into heaven, because, you know, I don't steal things from people. I've never murdered anybody, and, you know, I generally don't hurt too many people. I've done a lot of good things for other people, and so I think that probably God is going to look at the scale and say, "He's good enough to get into heaven." I mean, I've heard people say that. But that is, totally misses the whole point. It misses the point, because God doesn't grade on that scale. He grades on the scale of the fact that we accept his son, and we accept his forgiveness, that Jesus died for us.
The exception means that you forgive yourself also. That's the hard part, I mean. I can still think over things and think, how did he really forgive me? That was so bad. How come? I mean, would he really forgive me? I don't know everybody else who feels that way that I do.
That's right, yeah. Be able to forgive ourselves, the assurance we have, you know, the assurance that we are forgiven is very, very important, and that we don't continually beat ourselves up over it, because I know even in my own life, there's been sins that I've committed that, you know, I consider really, really bad. And, you know, I do have trouble with that. But I have to keep going to the cross, you know, I have to keep going to Jesus, and, and, and once that sin was gone, it's, it's over with, it's done. You know, you can't undo your sin, and maybe that's what we try to do. Maybe we try to undo what we've done wrong, because our hearts are so pricked by that. You know, we feel so, so upset about things that maybe we did or said, or something that hurt other people, you know, and, and, and maybe, maybe we really try to undo it. But we can't undo the past. It's already there. All we can do is accept what God has done.
Trying to undo
Yes.
Things that happened to you that, that were so
If, if only, if only I could go back and undo that, you know? And I bet you a lot of us have those things, you know, one thing or two things, or maybe a dozen things for some of us, that maybe haunt us. They haunt us. But don't let it haunt you, because you are clean by the blood of Christ. Charlie?
Mark, um, you had said in the very end of the book that the mission of Jesus was to comfort those who mourn. So he came to comfort us because of our sin. Because of
Right. Right.
You know, he came
And he comforted us, that's right. Right, always.
And that the Spirit has become the presence of Jesus in our hearts. I thought that was really good.
Yeah. Yes, and that's another thing that is very important, you know? When it says, "I am with you always," said Jesus in the Great Commission. He said that, "I'm going to leave, but another is going to come, a counselor, the pericleth, and he will remind you of all the things that I've said to you." And so there's a sense in which the Holy Spirit is taking the place of Jesus. Now, Jesus can't be here physically, but he can be here spiritually. And there's a sense in which, when you study the relationship between Christ and the Spirit, you realize that, that Jesus, that Christ, uh, that, that the Spirit is the spiritual manifestation of Jesus in our hearts. When, um, you know, we sing a song, I think, that's like that, "I've Got Jesus In My Heart" or something. Well, it is, that's true. It is Jesus. It's the manifestation through the Holy Spirit in our hearts. And he's trying to comfort us and give us a balm of Gilead to make us encouraged and comforted by the fact that our sin is forgiven. Yeah, very good. I think that's really true. Anybody else? Any other questions? Any other comments? Well, next week, we're going to have a, a study about, we're going to move a little bit because, um, what we've talked about in these first few principles of the beatitudes that Jesus was talking about is our relationship with God. In other words, number one, that we realize that we need to surrender to him, that we're dependent on him, that we have faith in Christ, that we walk, you know, in faith. And secondly, that we recognize our sin and that we are comforted by the fact that we have forgiveness. Now, in the third one on meekness, we're going to talk about the relationship with ourself. And we don't have to have testimonies, but, um, when Jesus says, "Blessed are the meek, for they will inherit the earth," it's a, it's, it, it, it becomes the prime quality of what a Christian is to be in your own life. And so he encourages us in that way. And the guest speaker next week may magnify that a little bit more, but at any rate, that's what we have to look forward to. Um, we're good, aren't we? Thank you, everybody. I'm going to close with this prayer at the end of the chapter. "Holy God, I confess my sin to you this day. I sin in my actions, actions I've committed and actions I've neglected. I sin in my words, words I have said and may have heard others, and words of encouragement that I did not say. I sin in my thoughts, negative, critical, immoral, retaliatory thoughts that creep into my mind. Forgive me, Lord, a sinner. Cleanse me by the blood of Jesus, who died for me to save me from my sin. Thank you, Father, for the assurance I receive from you that all my sins are forgiven, and I receive the comfort of eternal life that you will give me. As a poor needy sinner mourning over my sin, I receive your comfort forgiveness, O Lord, in Jesus' name. Amen."